Before we get started here, if I could ask everyone to turn your cell phones to mute. Before we begin, all of our microphones are on, time being six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Wanda.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Sherry.
Here, we have a quorum. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I do not.
I do not.
No. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
I would move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. At this time, would anyone care to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. The liquor license, we should probably wait till six ten. So let's go on to item number six, which is Mr. Solatchek.
So last Wednesday or Thursday, I got a phone call from Andy Vindell and Pierre. With the... They were doing some research on some safety projects, intersection of 310 and 451st, which would be by the cemetery north out of Gayville. So as you're coming south out of Gayville-Vallin, there's a curve right at the cemetery. Anyways, the state, the DOT would like to possibly remove that intersection, that curve, and turn it into a T-intersection. Reasoning is, in the past 10 years, there's been four accidents there. I know a couple of them were into the guardrail to where we have had to repair the guardrail. My question to him was, before I go to this drastic change, you know, is there... Maybe we should look into rumble bars or warning lights? But then yet again, the other side says, here's money that they will give us to do this project. So maybe, maybe we don't pass it up. Because they're predicting about $130,000 total cost of the project, and our match would be 13,000.
Our cost would be 13?
Our cost would be 13, 10%. So I kind of checked into some lighting, some flashing lights, solar lights today. Couple hundred bucks, might only last a couple of years, but to put rumble strips in, that's something we can do on our own. So I'm on the fence on what, what should we do here?
Do you offhand know, Mike, what the traffic count is on that road?
That I do not. I would have to look.
I think it's more than you think.
One thing I did ask about the accidents that did happen there. I was curious, you know, were they alcohol-related, were they distracted driving, what was the cause, you know? Well, one was alcohol-related at 6:30 in the evening. One was a two-car collision at 3:55 in the afternoon. And two were because of speed. One was at 4:00 a.m. and the other at 1:30 a.m. Just a little more info on that, but I do have copies of the accident reports if you guys would want to see. It's nothing we have to make a decision right away. Something to think about if we would like to possibly do something like this, we can put it on another.
So, so Mike, for this project, would 310 then just be, that'd just be a straight through and then there would be a stop sign on 451?
Correct.
Okay. And most of the cost is probably tearing out the old asphalt and building up the new and making it a T-intersection. Would you feel that'd make that, that safer?
See, and that's another, I'm kind of tore on that too, because who's to say if you blow through that stop sign coming from the north, you're going to end up right up in the cemetery again, you know?
Literally, yeah.
You know? So it's one of them deals, do we go through with it and take the money and have it done and over with? Or do we just try to do some rumble bars and some traffic warning lights?
Have you talked to anybody on the town board for Gayville and got their opinion?
That I have not, it was kind of shortened, this just came up last Wednesday or Thursday.
When is our deadline to decide whether or not?
He did not give me an exact timeline on this.
Isn't that speed limit there 40 miles an hour?
It's 55 coming up to the curve, and then there's yellow suggested 25s. The yellows are suggested.
What happens if you move the speed limit sign down, so 55 becomes 40 or 35?
Right, yep.
That would take some of the incentive of...
Keeping the curve then?
Yeah.
That's possible too, we could drop it down to 40, 45, you know, 1,000 feet before the curve.
And I would think those signs would be fairly reasonable.
About $35 a sign.
I guess my initial reaction is, one, change is bad, right? People are used to that.
I could see it upsetting people from that area.
They're either going to be upset, or like you say, we might see an increase in accidents going to a T until people realize that that's a T now.
Right.
You know, it's great that there's funding, but I guess I'd lean towards some rumble, rumble bars and lighting the signs. And I don't know if this offer, whatever you would call it, would be available a year or two, three down the road if that didn't seem to do the trick, but...
So I'm looking...
Cheaper than $13,000.
Looking at the accident reports right now, two were, two people were from Gayville and the other one was from Wisconsin and Fort Weiss. So... It's a 50-50 there.
I'm inclined to lower the speed limit and put lights up.
I'd like to reach out to the board members at Gayville and Vallin and see what their thoughts are, because I know Gayville and Vallin people, citizens would use that road quite often. Kind of get their opinion on what they'd like to see. Maybe put it on the agenda for next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
I think we know what they'd like to do is not change it, right?
Yes and maybe no. They, you know, especially, you know, Nick Huber, Jay Jorgensen, those individuals from Gayville, they live there all the time, and they, I'm sure, would have some, you know, opinion on it that I would tend to, to...
Is that on, that's not township?
No, that is ours.
And if they're, if they are in favor of leaving it, then that would, that would probably be the way I'd want to go to. What, what's the, what's the reason the state is going through and identifying these and...
There's so much, so many dollars set aside for safety improvements, and this is one of the projects. Whatever reports they run, this is one that came up.
So they're federal dollars, so I assume they have a timeline with which to spend them. So, and my gut tells me the majority of the traffic is north-south.
The problem, yes, with the accidents is southbound traffic.
Yep. Okay.
I spoke with, with him today too, I was trying to see if, like on 294 and 448, there's a hill with two curves coming up to 448. I would like to cut that down, and he says that won't happen there.
So we'd like to do some safety improvements, they don't qualify?
Yeah.
Okay. So from a commission standpoint, do we feel in need to revisit this in another meeting? Or do we feel we can make a decision tonight and give my direction?
I guess I'd throw my vote with, with Dan. Get the opinions from locals and see what they think.
I think if there's an interest from, from the town boards of Vallin or Gayville to do something with it, I think we revisit it. If there is no interest, we just move on.
Can we put it on the agenda for next time? I was going to ask Mike, is that enough time for you?
Yeah.
Two weeks, okay? We will put you on for...
You want me to get a hold of them, or you're going to get a hold of them, Dan?
I can, I can call Jay and Nick and Cory and those guys and see what they have to say about it.
So it'd be August 3rd?
Is there any other info I should dig up for this?
You know, I don't know if we've got traffic counts for that intersection from that study that was done in 2014, I don't know.
I can, I can just...
You might check that.
We might have our own too, I just got to...
So it sounds like, you know, we all agree that it's not the safest intersection, and if we aren't going to turn it into a T-section, we don't want to do probably speed limit signs and maybe some rumble bars. We can't, is that why, so...
I did, I did order a flashing light today, it was $200.
So just maybe, maybe what the cost would be for some of the rumble strips. And like you said, it, 35 bucks per sign.
All right.
It shouldn't be an issue, so.
Then you guys just have to pass a resolution on, on the speed limit change.
Correct. Correct. All right. Is that all you have?
I believe so.
You're free to go.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
All right, now we will go back to item number five, which is temporary two-day liquor license for the upper deck. Any questions or concerns on the application?
No.
None.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? So at this time, I'd entertain a motion if it's pertinent to someone.
I would move to accept the temporary, or approve the temporary two-day liquor license by the upper deck for Gavin's Point recreational facility.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, a second by Clemish, to approve the alcohol beverage license for Mark and Kenneth Housman. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. All right, number seven, Mr. Scherschlik. Pre-disaster mitigation discussion.
Good evening. As you may or may not know, we are rewriting our pre-disaster mitigation plan right now. And part of the process is that each community we reached out to, is there, is there anything that they want to put in the plan? But us as a county need to look at what we want to put in the plan. And with the basis of that is, is that you have to have it in your minutes of what you want to put into it, and then we put it in the plan. Now, there's no commitment to any of these projects. This is kind of a wish list, if you will, but it's things that if, like, if you wanted to put up a storm shelter, or if you wanted a mitigation project is like raising the road out on the stone church. I mean, there are projects out there. I sent you a booklet that was 80 pages long, that was real interesting reading. And, and I typed up some ideas that might be, you know, something that could go into the plan. Now again, I can't emphasize enough, these are just, there's no commitment to any of this. We don't have to put money away or anything like that unless one of them we see and there's a big disaster, and we're going to get a bunch of money to put towards this through federal dollars. But we need to have something in the books from the county. And then the first, do you guys still have that email I sent you, or I did bring copies? Copy. Yes. Oops, sorry. Next one, do you want to, Joe?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
The bullets are actually in the plan right now, and I would suggest that we continue leaving them in the plan. It's one of those deals that, you know, critical infrastructure for different facilities. Storm-ready county, we're working with this, we were hoping to be that way already. There is no cost to us other than some advertising or some public handouts, not handouts, but just awareness type things. National Weather Service comes in and does this survey. Drought for emergency planning, that was in there, different outreach programs and awareness for tornado risk, it's all kind of weather stuff, but these are all things are just more or less media campaigns, things of that nature. Another one that I have on here is distributing tornado shelter locations information. And that's basically giving people the information, you know, we put the, we had the two done out at the Boy Scout camp at their cost. But, and there's other people that if they wanted to do, getting mitigation from it, doesn't necessarily have to be the county's paying for it. It could be like a developer, but it would be run through the county like we did with the Boy Scout camp. But again, it has to be in the plan for it to qualify. Support Severe Weather Awareness Week, and again, that's just notifications. WF1 map and assess, that's with the flood mitigation stuff. I know Gary, with the new flood stuff coming out, the flood maps coming out next year, we're thinking they're coming out. But anyway, just different things of that nature. I know there's been a lot of talk of vulnerability for wildland fire. There's been big discussion with the fire departments out the lake area. Do we need to do some more mitigations, you know, look at ways that maybe have a second alternate route, getting out of some of them places, or doing a fire-ready community so that in case a fire would go out, we've got enough setbacks around the homes. But these are all programs that are out there, but they, they cost. And if they could be funded by disaster, or federal money, I know there was some things that were talked about a couple of years ago, we just didn't have the fundings for it at that time. But again, those were just some of the different plans or ideas that were in the book that have been talked about that were in years past, and I'd kind of like to see them remain in the book. But again, it's something that you guys as the commission have to decide and make a motion to approve, and then we can put them in the plan once Patty submits the minutes, if you will, with everything listed to us so that we can get them put in the plan.
I know you have flooding on here, but how specific you want, do you want to get? I mean, last major flooding event, we, you know, we had the damage to Jamesville Bridge. Jimmy, do we want to have that specific, you know, flooding erosion?
I think flooding in general, that's the way it covers everything. If we get really specific, then they're going to tie us down to that specific project.
So tonight, if we support your 10 items that are listed here, we just need to make a motion to accept Paul's additions.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone have anything they'd like to add to that list?
I have a question. What kind of a winter storm thing are you making? I mean, it's, it's coming, what do we do?
Well, one of the things in, in the winter storm preparedness, if you will, we need to look at who can we, if we have a bunch of people traveling through Yankton County, and all of a sudden we have a blizzard, where do we put them? And part of that plan could be, we could use a facility, if we do some mitigation money, and make it so it's got a backup generator so we can put people in it, it's got a kitchen, it's got, you know, like the center is one of our, our emergency shelters for here in the, in the city. All the other little towns have little things, if you will, in the other communities. But right now, we don't have anything, and huge, I mean, it's small demand. So those are, not saying we're going to do something, but we can look at it and see what we can find out. And it might be just an agreement between us and let's say, Simple Arena, and that we can use their facility and their kitchen, and we put people in. But we might have to do a little mitigation and some planning and stuff like that to make it happen.
Like a vaccination tent?
Yes, like that.
Could maybe be covered under something like that?
Right.
Mentioned like alternate routes, you know, the one route we have, Riverside Acres, Deer Boulevard. Is there any chance we could, you know, if something happens to that road, there's a bad accident or something, and it's tied up for four or five hours, would there be any way to, you know, improve that road with...
Well, usually a mitigation project has to be approved by FEMA.
Okay.
So I mean, if that's going to be months, if you know, it's working with federal government. But if we can address that right now, I mean, if there's, and we're wanting to move forward to it, we could probably, you know, if the mitigation dollars are there, we could put in a road so that we don't have to worry when it does happen, we already got an alternate way out. You know, we look at the other side of like Rolling Hills addition. You get out there toward the west end of that, you got to go out through Hay Meadow and out to the Boy Scout camp. I mean, but there's a lot of people that might have to exit out through Gavin's Point area west if the big fire broke out. And I know talking with like the Yankton Fire Department, those are projects that, they like to do a wildland fire study out there. One of the estimates was $30,000 to do the study. Well, if we do that, let's use, if we can get mitigation money to pay for it, that's only 5% that we have to match, so.
Are you thinking of putting storm warning sirens out in the many camper resort parks that we have?
I would love to, but about 10 years ago, six, maybe eight years ago, we started a campaign. I don't know if you remember, Don, of putting sirens out that way, and we got turned out. I mean, the commission approved $100,000 a year to put storm sirens out through the whole lake area out there, and nobody wanted the sirens to look at. So that stopped, we got three out there and then we quit, everything was shut down. But part of me and part of maybe some of the mitigation through the strategic planning is that when somebody does a big development out by Riverside Acres, part of that development is responsible for paying part of that percentage to put that siren up in their development, rather than it being a county problem. But, or...
As many campers are out there, you would think that the owners would want their residents to be warned.
We have a storm siren in Riverside Acres on, I better not say, it's three, three roads in from, I can't remember. Anyway, and then there's one at the Marina and one at the entrance.
To Gavin's Point?
To Gavin's Point. That's the only ones that we have out in that area, and then the Boy Scout camp. We were able to pull one out there through a grant, through Homeland Security actually hasn't paid for it. But I mean, if, if there's a place in an area that somebody would want, I'd have no problem applying for funding, grant, you know, dollars to add another siren somewhere. But there's the maintenance and all that stuff that we'd have to figure out that, along in on that, because every four years you have to replace the batteries in them, because they're technically battery-operated. 110 that runs to them is just to charge the batteries, they're 48 volt DC, that's all they operate. But yeah, but having that, maybe there's an opportunity that we could find funding and put them in places that, as the county continues to grow, because we are growing and, you know, services need to be expanded in some format if possible. And if we can do it federal dollars, it's just that much easier.
So thoughts on Paul's proposal here to add these 10 items with some sub-items in there? Are there any we would like to delete, or any we would like to add?
Only thing I would, well, not the only thing, one thing I would maybe add is, because I know we talked, you have a request for, for a tent or shelter. If that would be covered under something like that, I would probably have it on the list. And I, I assume, you know, going back to some of the COVID calls over the last year, you know, early on, a big struggle was finding places where we're going to quarantine people if there was a mass outbreak and things, and I, maybe that would fit under that too, you know?
Sure. You know, and also give us a, you know, I don't have it on here, but we look at, you know, as time goes on, maybe the next three or four years, we're going to have to look for a facility that we actually have an emergency operations center that's bigger than we've got now, because we have so many people that are part of it that we can't get them in the building. And, you know, it's where do we go from this, that we, we have fire station two as a backup, if you will, but if we have a disaster going on, the city's using their building for their thing, and now we don't have that. I mean, things have changed since then. Not saying Tom's going to kick us out of the fire hall, but we might be out in a shop. But it's just the idea that things have changed through the years, and when we originally did that, back when they built that, is now there's a little bit of different agreements, because we looked at doing that during the flood of 19, of moving over there, and they actually had something going on with the city that we couldn't use the building, so. I mean, it happens, but, you know, that's not in here, but that's something that maybe the next rewrite that we do in four years, that could be added into here. I know sheltering facilities, you know, goes also back to that, what you had talked about, Wanda, the winter storm. I mean, we could add that as a multi, multi-hazard facility that's portable on that line.
Do something like that.
Right, because I can remember back, I don't know if you remember, but Lesterville had a bad water sample go in, and I, we think it was a bad sample at the lab, but that, that's just my opinion. But they said it was dry cleaning fluid that got put into the water. So nobody could drink the water, everybody that was pregnant was going to have birth defects and everything. I mean, the state came down and just freaked out everybody. So we brought in decontents and do portable showers, we brought water in from other communities so that people could shower, you know, stuff like that, but we had to go get the stuff. I mean, we had, I mean, not saying we still can't do that, but having a place to put people, house people in a crisis, to me, is very important. And if, if a community gets wiped out because of something, that's where that, that tent that you're talking about, that we were talking, or it could be a vaccination center, you know? We don't know what's going to happen with the D variant coming out here now, you know? It's one of those deals, but anyway.
Anything on nuclear incidents?
Not at the time, I mean, there's really nobody talking about that, I mean, they talk about it, but...
Russians are.
Russians and the Koreans, North Koreans. But I, I mean, we got rid of all the civil defense, civil defense shelters, you know, that used to be around with the big emblem. I mean, people are taking the signs because they want to hang it on their wall, but anyway, no, there is nothing at this time. We got to get your color, but that's all we got.
So we have Paul's list of essentially 10, and then Joe has requested to add a multi-hazard portable facility?
I think that would work.
Any others, so we're at about 11. And if we're good with those 11, we can entertain a motion to approve to add those to the PDM?
Yeah, PDM, pre-disaster mitigation plan.
Okay.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve adding a list of 11 items to our pre-disaster mitigation plan.
With an addition.
Yeah, yep, with that, so these 10 and that. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. So did you get that multi-hazard portable facility will be on that, okay? All right.
Pretty simple there, Joe.
Item number eight. Come on in, Michelle. All right, we received word... All right, we received word here in the last few weeks. Am I right on that? That NACO, which is our National Association of County Officials, did award our equalization team with an achievement award for lending a helping hand. So in my notes, from their application, there was four things that they had submitted that their, their team did over 2020. The first was the assisting the auditor's office with absentee ballots. As we know, the auditor's office was very busy with an unusual voting year. Number two was assisting the highway department with a mountain of paperwork for the 2019 flood. Um, if anybody has ever worked with FEMA before, you fully understand that task. And they loaned essentially one of their employees for two or three months to, at least two months. Yeah, to go over there and essentially park, um, at the highway department and enter data all day. Um, and item three was the employee handbook. They did a great deal of work when we went through and reviewed our employee handbook, reviewing the drafts and the final versions of that. And the last would be the development of a wage matrix for our employees. We had never had that done before, so they did a lot of data gathering, organizing how to fit all of our positions into that matrix. They contacted lots of other counties. If, had we paid for that, it would have been 30 or $40,000 to have an outside entity do that. And they really took the lead on that and, and assisted with that. So given all of those things, um, this was supposed to be presented at the national conference, but I don't think anyone from our county went. So I will present this now. So it's a 2021 achievement award winner. The National Association of Counties is proud to award Yankton County a 2021 achievement award for its program titled Lending a Helping Hand. So please, put your hands together and give a little round of applause for our equalization team. So just to name, uh, the last thing I wanted to name, the members of their team, Lori Mackey and Matt Archer, who have retired. Um, and Jeff Putoff, Michelle Goken, Andrea Wright, Nancy Rockmuller, who has retired as well, but now is working part-time for us again, Jessica Atkinson and Cassie Foss. So again, thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Lot to turn around there.
Next on the agenda is item number nine. This is the second reading of our Drainage Ordinance Proposed Changes.
Yes, uh, this is the second, second reading to consider recommendation to adopt the Yankton County Drainage Ordinance, number 19, proposed amendments per ordinance 21 ZN03.
All right, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Would any citizen care to make a public comment on the Drainage Ordinance Proposed Changes? There being no interest, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for final discussion and voting. Any discussion?
There, there was one thing I had missed it. I, I know it was discussed at one time and I, it didn't get it put in there. I was gonna see what people's thoughts are. Section 3.03 application. And what we call out as part of the application, right now it's under G with the changes, but all signed waivers, including a complete 811 call notification for performing drainage work in Yankton County. I, I would suggest that we strike that, uh, some of these permits get approved and the work doesn't begin for 18 months. And an 811 call, legally, but it has to be called in by the person doing the digging. And so to have that with you with documentation that you made this 811 call prior to even applying or as part of the application, I think is, is preemptive. Other than that, I didn't have any.
So you're looking to, to strike essentially the entire sentence?
Strike that entire.
Or do you wanna just take out the including a complete 811 call notification?
I could probably just say in, strike including a complete 811 call notification. So agreed, all signed waivers and, uh, all signed waivers for performing drainage work in Yankton County.
That would mean they would have to have the waiver from the highway to work in the, so essentially strike the whole thing?
Yeah, I would strike, reading it, the whole thing, cause we do have the waivers from the highway, um, or the county or township.
Separate.
And then adjoining landowners if you're getting an easement that's covered. So I would strike the whole thing.
Okay. Now, one thing I will read out of my law book. So adoption or rejection by board publication referendum provisions applicable. After the hearing, the board shall by resolution or ordinance as appropriate, either adopt or reject the amendment, supplement, change, modification, or repeal with or without changes. Consideration of any changes to the proposed amendment, supplement, change, modification, or repeal may only be done if the time and place of the hearing is published at least 10 days in advance in the legal newspaper of the county. If adopted, the board shall publish a notice of the fact of adoption once in a legal newspaper of the county and take effect on the 20th day after publication. So 11-230 gives us, um, the opportunity to make adjustments like this. Any other suggested changes to the amendments we are proposing?
Looks like it takes surf, um, surface drainage completely out, right?
It does.
So there, there'll be no longer any requirements if you wanna do ditching just subsurface drainage.
Uh, floodplain would still apply. Any work in the floodplain would need to have development permit. Any other comments? Certainly if there are none, we entertain a motion to either, um, accept current, except with Joe's, um, proposed change or to deny.
I'd move to accept it with Mr. Healy's change for deleting the 811 notification in the application, because it does not make sense.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, a second by Kettering, to approve the proposed drainage amendments with the change to remove 3.03G. And that G refers to the, the new lettering. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Amendments have passed 5-0.
Next, we have second reading to consider the recommendation to adopt the Yankton County Ordinance 2020 Amendment to Definitions and Complete Article 5 Agricultural District, Per Ordinance 21 ZN05.
All righty, 6:35 and we are okay. All right, so before we get going, um, I do want to have a little discussion about the hearing. At this time, since I have a feeling we'll have quite a few folks who want to come up and speak, which is great, I would ask that you sign, um, the form that's there by the door. Two reasons for that. One, um, I can pronounce your name hopefully. Two, so Patty knows who you are and how to spell your name. If you do sign up, please put to the side that you are from Yankton County or you are not, because during the public comment portion, we're going to give priority to Yankton County citizens first. So, but before we take public comment, so at this time, come on up and, and sign your name if you're interested in speaking, please.
And please print.
Oh, please print, yes. Um, so we can clearly, clearly read. Yep, and we will allow three minutes per speaker. Um, normally we go an hour for public comment. Before we do that, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I do. I think before, before the public comment, I wanted to just, uh, give a brief overview. Uh, try to hold my own opinions to myself, but, um, there's several, I call it misinformation out there, I think, needs addressing before we get too far down the road. So first and foremost, I think, um, you know, one thing that's been, there was an article in the paper today, about special permitted uses and, and CAFOs being approved with no public notice, no public hearing. I, it continues to baffle me, there, there's nothing in the special permitted uses regarding CAFOs being permitted. There is expansion, has been moved to the special permitted uses. But that exists in our ordinance today and I don't know where that's coming from. I guess nobody's enlightened me as to why they feel that way, but, been several articles and, and comments regarding that to date. A couple other things, there's, you know, been this ad running in the paper, uh, with the radio ad about every half hour on WNEX, it seems to, to read this. I'm just gonna touch on a few things on this, on this ad. So that, the, the article takes issue with, um, the start of construction and, and how we defined it. That is actually a state definition and was, was put into place, um, in 2019 or 2020? 2020, I believe.
SB 157.
Yep. And along with that was, uh, expiration of CUPs and, and some of those things. So that is, is out of our hands and out of our control. Section 506, uh, it addresses, and that regards a 25% expansion. What's, I guess, put forward here is one, who monitors this? And, and they allude that we are favoring large operations because it's a 25% expansion rather than a single number, which it is today. You know, we've had discussion on that. Regarding enforcement, nobody enforces this ordinance unless it, I mean, nobody's walking around or driving around enforcing everything. We don't walk around and enforce speed limits, bridge load limits, things of that nature. Every person would have to have a, an officer assigned to them if we really wanted to get down to that in this county. We do ask that you do your diligence to abide by the law. Regarding the, you know, the small family farm, in, in this critique of that, it suggested that we're, we're we're favoring large operations. And then if you go, uh, to the critique of 507, then, then it's suggesting that uh, we're favoring small operations and not large operations. So I'm not sure which, which one we're supposed to be doing, I guess. It also in 507 talks about, uh, manure. It says it does not apply to human waste from cities, municipalities, et cetera. Human waste, uh, from cities, municipalities, septic systems, um, are, are listed as a CUP. We don't get into the weeds on some of the requirements. That's much, uh, dictated by the state. And, but it is a, a CUP requirement in, in the ordinance. Section 516 was to me a large one. It alludes that, it says there's no protections for ag operations. So 516 is a new, our, a new paragraph in here. It says there's no protections for ag operations in this section, only protections for acreage owners. The entire reason 516 exists is as protections to livestock producers. We don't have that section today. And we specifically put it in there as protections to livestock, uh, owners. And essentially what that says is that if you are a livestock producer and you are here before I come and build a new home, then you have preference. And I cannot impede on your setbacks. That's essentially what it, what it's after. I'm not sure how that can be mis, misstrued as, as, uh, simply protecting the acreage owners, but that's not the intent. And 519, this article suggests that this is a brand new section with new, um, performance standards. And anybody can open the current ordinance and see that 519 exists today. And it's somewhat reorganized, but, uh, it reads fairly similar to how it is today, as far as requirements go. I think I have more, but I think the, the, the point is there's a lot of misinformation out there on many of these things. If, if anybody feels that they're gonna be impacted positively, negatively whatsoever, read the ordinance, please. If you have questions on how to interpret it, a phone call's free. There's five commissioners, two people in the zoning office that hopefully have a pretty good grasp on it. Phone calls are free. An ad 10 times a day on the radio, plus this several times, costs a lot of money. I, I didn't get questions once on any of these things. So please read it for yourself. If you hear something that sounds ridiculous, it probably is, and it's probably not true. Or it's probably misinterpreted. If it's not, I, we would like to know about it prior to the hearing of the, of passing the, uh, the ordinance changes. Setback table was one. You know, I think, I felt that we simplified it. Um, again, 519, we reorganized a lot. But it exists today. One, one large one that I guess it should be addressed is, it says that we're gonna limit how farms can be sold and to who. And there's, nothing could be further from the truth. We have no, no say, nor do we want any say on who anybody wants to sell their, their operation to. So again, please just read the ordinance, take it for face value of what it actually says. If you hear things, please do your own due diligence, read it, contact somebody if you have questions. You know, if, if half of the things going around were true, I would be concerned as well as a citizen in the county. I, I boil this changes down to three, three main things, um, with some, I'd say minor changes that allow them to happen. Change number one, that's going to, you know, probably be the, the largest impact is separating liquid and solid manure and increasing the setbacks for liquid manure. That's probably the number one change that I think would be a drastic change. And I think we've had two people comment on it. I think one commented and one without any bias one way or another. And I think another person, wanted us to take another look at it, but I heard no complaints about that. And that, to me, that's the largest change. The second change is setbacks, although they increase there, they cap at one and a half miles. So they've gone from four miles from the lake area, the boundaries of the lake, or two miles in the rest of the county down to one. or two miles in the rest of the county, down to one and a half miles. That's probably the change number two, that's a large change, and change number three, to me, would be putting the five sixteen in where new residences have to acknowledge existing CAFOs and acknowledge that those CAFOs can expand because they were there first, offering that protection. So to me, those are the biggest three changes. We've had to make smaller changes to make those happen, one being special permitted uses. But there again, every CAFO continues to need a CUP. So I, I guess that's all I have to say. I wanted to kind of dispel some of the rumors that I've been hearing, and I don't know if other people have other rumors, but I think if we stick to the facts, we get a lot farther, a lot faster.
Thank you. So I did want to walk through a little bit on Article five before we take public comment as well. I went through every change that was made and documented, if it was a brand-new change, or if it was wording that was taken from our current ordinance and simply moved. So as you go through Article five, Section five oh three, essentially, the three things that were crossed out there were simply moved to five oh six, which is our special permitted uses area. When you get to Section five oh six, there is a new section, and they're not, it, it is a new section overall, but there is a new way to look at things, and that is animal feeding operations class B. And there, we are essentially saying two hundred to four ninety-nine must meet a setback, and it must have a manure management plan. Unless it's liquid or thermostatically controlled, then they need CUPs. Now, when you look at Turner County's ordinance, they have a special permitted use section as well, that starts at three hundred animal units and goes to nine ninety-nine. Lincoln County is two hundred to four ninety-nine. So if you lived in Lincoln County today, you would see this in their current ordinance. The expansion that has been getting lots of discussion and how it reads is a concentrated animal feeding operation existing are allowed a one-time expansion of 25% over current operation size if the operation exists on an occupied farmstead of continuous property to the farmstead not to exceed nine hundred ninety-nine animal units. So we keep getting these questions about what happens if they have two thousand animal units? They can go up by 25%. They can't, because they're over nine ninety-nine. So this allows those smaller operators to expand within a window. And it is similar to how Lincoln County does it with their existing operations up to nine ninety-nine.
And I think, to tee off that one note, if you, if you have, you know, let's say you're a beef feedlot, three hundred animal units, you don't even really worry about the 25%, because you can go up to five hundred before a CUP even comes into place. The, you would have to worry about setbacks, but if you, if you have three hundred three hundred beef cattle at a setback of a quarter mile from a house, one, I don't think there's very many operations that come into play there, and two, you would have to have a pretty poor relationship with your neighbor, I think, for that to come into play and block you from expanding.
So I had number seven under there is new. Agribusinesses are allowed on lots of five acres. We decided to do that for agribusinesses, and we decided to leave residential at twenty acres, so that section is new. No other county I know does that. Conditional uses, when we get to the concentrated animal feeding operations, Yankton County proposed two hundred for liquid or for thermostatically controlled and five hundred for dry lots. That's where CUPs start. In Turner County, a thousand. In Lincoln County, it's five hundred. And I think Minnehaha is fifty. When you get later in that section, there was a lot of question about, I shouldn't say a lot of question, there were some questions about the spreading injection of manure from outside the county. And what we tried to do there was to clear that up, because how it reads today, it sounds like if you generate manure in this county, you also need to get a CUP for that. It's very misleading. So we clarified that is manure outside of the county. Lincoln County doesn't require a CUP, but they do outline the same requirements in their manure management section, so that's in Lincoln County as well. When we get to minimum lot requirements, we left it at twenty acres after an extremely long discussion. Turner County is two and a half, and Lincoln County's one. But both those counties limit the number per section to essentially eight. And I already mentioned, we added the agribusinesses. The last two sections in there that were crossed out have been moved, so they weren't completely deleted, they were moved to Section five sixteen. Minimum yard requirements. There's been a lot of requests for variance from the lot line, and we moved all of them to fifty. And I think it's unfair to compare those to Turner and Lincoln, because their lot sizes are two and a half and one acre. So they're certainly not going to have a seventy-five-foot setback from the lot line. When you get to five sixteen, this is new residence requirements, and Joe touched on this a little bit already. Number one is entirely new, and it was completely put in there to give some protection to current operators. You have no protection today. Anybody can build a house right next to you and limit your operation today. So what this section does is it gives you first priority. Now, there's been some question about Item D, where it says, if the AFo and/or CAFO operator sells the operation to a non-family member, this setback exemption from the new residents is non-transferable. And there's been folks saying that this is telling everybody you can't sell your operation. That's not what this says. What this says is, if Joe has an operation and I build a home next to him, I have to give him a waiver for anything he wants to do. He could go up to 10,000 animal units regardless of me. But if Joe sells his operation to Don, Don, I count against Don, because he was there after me. So Joe's there first, I'm second, Don's third. It's just the chain of order of who was there first. Now, if Joe transfers that operation to his son or daughter, he keeps that right, and I'm still subject to them, because that's the family operation they are passing down. That's what D means. It does not mean Joe cannot sell his operation and transfer his right to have those animals. Absolutely does not mean that. So I do think that needed to be cleared up. So when you get to five nineteen, finally, concentrated animal feeding operation performance standards, number one is the conditional use permit application process, and Part A is site description information. That section was copied from Turner and Lincoln. Every one of those, I shouldn't say every. Number six is Lincoln. Turner doesn't have it. And then number, oh, number eight, Turner is a musk, Lincoln is a may, and that has to do with test boring. So all of those items were essentially built off. The ordinances, everybody said, are really good. So that's where that came from, and what it does is it really organizes it well. So there is no reason to rewrite anything. So Part B is the facility management plan. And Turner and Lincoln have Part One and Part Two. Many of these things are from our current ordinance. When you get to Part Three, a screening and/or buffering section to include planting of trees. Turner County requires four rows of trees. This one's requiring five. Lincoln County does not, but when they hear the CUP application, oftentimes, trees are added, but it's not a requirement. So Part Four was expanded from our current ordinance. It's a review of industry best management practices. What we did there was specifically list things versus just say, best management practices. Number five is stormwater management plan. Turner County has that in theirs, and it's currently in ours. The last one is road haul agreements, completely new. It is not in Turner, it is not in Lincoln, but they do consider it during their hearings. But it is brand-new proposed here. When you get to Part C, Waste Management Plan Requirements, that first part, and I will say Turner requires anything over three hundred, shall obtain a general water pollution control permit. Lincoln requires a qualified professional to approve this. Anything over a thousand must be state-approved, and that's very similar to what's stated here. We are saying a CAFO greater than or equal to a thousand must get a state general permit, and that's their rule anyway. Number four, under Part Two there, the proposed site is located over a map shallow aquifer area as depicted on a Department of D A N R, et cetera. That's new here. But if you look at Turner and Lincoln Counties, they have aquifer overlay maps. And in there, in order to build in that location, you have to meet certain regulations, and test boring's one of them. As you go further down here, some of the time, timeframe for removal of manure, that's in Turner, that was taken from there. The land application process or methods have to be listed. That's new. Legal description and map, including documented proof of area to be utilized for manure application. That's new, and that's from Lincoln. Turner requires sufficient land, but no map. Lincoln requires legal descriptions. You turn the page. If the applicant does not own all of the land, which will be used for the spreading of waste, the applicant shall provide an enforceable lease easement, et cetera. That is new. That was taken from Lincoln. Lincoln actually goes so far as to require three-year contracts. Part D, prior to construction, obtain a stormwater permit. That's in our current ordinance. Part E, Yankton County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment or Director may require additional information or conditions reasonably related to a CAFO not contained here. And that was taken from both Lincoln and Turner. That's not in our current ordinance, it's new, but it was copied. When we get to Part Two, Facility Setback Requirements, that first paragraph allows waivers in this county without the need for variance. Today, if you want a waiver from your neighbor to take them out of the picture for a setback, you have to go through a variance process for $450. We're taking that out. If they sign the, the waiver, they're a ghost on your map. Turner and Lincoln allow waivers as well. When you get to the setback, and Joe mentioned, this is probably one of the bigger changes that are being made. And I, I took a few levels of animal feeding operations, and we will compare to Turner and Lincoln. Less than two hundred, currently today, zero setback. We are proposing a zero setback. Turner County is a quarter mile. Lincoln County is zero. When we move up to five hundred, today in our county, it's a quarter mile. We are proposing five hundred liquid at a quarter mile and five hundred dry a quarter mile. When you look at Turner and Lincoln, they are both a quarter mile. When you go to a thousand, today in our county is a quarter mile. We are proposing liquid at a half and dry at three eighths. When you look at Turner, it's three eighths. When you look at Lincoln, it's a half. When you go to two thousand, currently today, it's a half a mile in Yankton. Liquid is proposed at one. Dry is proposed at three-quarter. When you look at Turner, it's four tenths, so point four. And you look at Lincoln, it's three-quarter. When you go to five thousand, today, if you're not close to the lake area, it's two miles, and we are proposing one and a half for everything. When you look at Turner, it's a half mile. When you look at Lincoln, it's three-quarters of a mile. The maximum setback we are proposing for our county is one and a half, whereas it was mentioned before, from the city of Yankton today, and the lake area, it's four miles. And for everywhere else, it's two. So I just wanted to make those highlights to show there are areas where we are increasing setbacks. But when you compare them to Turner and Lincoln, depending, some of those levels, yeah, there, there's a pretty big difference, but some of those levels, it's exactly the same. When you go further in that chart, when you look at setbacks from wells, lakes and streams, et cetera, some of those, for especially Lincoln, are much larger than the ones that are listed here. Turner County is pretty close to where we are at on all of those, and I'm not going to step through each one of those.
And that section is not new to our ordinance?
No, absolutely not. Those numbers, and I did notice when I was going through comparing them one last time, there is one number in the chart here that was inadvertently changed, and that is lakes, rivers, and streams. Currently, it's a thousand, and here it's listed at six sixty. So one of those was reduced, but the other ones are all exactly the same as they are in our current ordinance. So when you get to Part Three, which is the manure application, A and B are based on our current ordinance. When you get to C, this is new, based on current practice, and it follows what Lincoln and Turner require, and that's the part where all liquid manure shall be injected to provide for better benefits. And it does say liquid manure may be surface-applied if approved by the D A N R for emergency discharge only. I don't think that clause is in Turner and Lincoln. Part D talks about irrigation, and essentially, it's all in our current ordinance except for number four. No irrigation shall be applied when soils are water-saturated, frozen, or covered with snow, or when other soil conditions would result in waste runoff. So that's the only portion that's new in D. Otherwise, it's all in our current ordinance.
I believe D A N R, that comes right out of D A N R, so if you're a thousand or larger, you've got to apply to that anyway.
Part E and F are both new, so E is manure should not be applied over frozen or snow-covered ground, but notice the word should. It's an advisory, it's not a requirement. And then F is no pipes or draglines may be permanently installed in the public right-of-way. That is new. And I have not seen that in Turner and Lincoln. G is new. The producer or agent acting on behalf of the producer shall inspect the land application equipment, et cetera. So that's essentially, talks about being a good steward and checking your equipment before you do it. It might seem like you do that normally. Ninety-nine percent of us do, but it is listed here, and it is all brand-new, and then...
That also is a requirement of the D A N R.
So on the Part H, notification section should be formulated by the applicant, so essentially, you're supposed to notify people within a half a mile of where you're putting manure. This is in our current ordinance. The only change is, the word shall has been changed to should. So we have a manure application setback chart. The only number in here that was changed from our current ordinance was lakes, rivers, and streams. Injection or incorporation of manure used to be two hundred feet, now it's two fifty. Otherwise, all of those numbers are exactly the same, and when I look at Turner and Lincoln, we're right in the ballpark on, on all of those numbers. And then the last section was five twenty, and, and I, I don't think there's been too much listed there. Now, if anybody would like a copy of my notes on this, go to the county's website and contact me, and I'll send you this document. On the one side, it says exactly what's being changed from a county perspective, and on the other side, it has what Turner and Lincoln are doing today. But I did want to walk through, because we have gotten several comments about But I did want to walk through because we have gotten several comments about comparing Yankton County to Turner especially, and then Lincoln. And both those counties are viewed as very pro egg. And as I walked through and I compared our current ordinance and some of the changes we're making, yeah, some things are being added that are new. But we're not being wild childs here. This isn't completely out of the ballpark. So at this time, any other comments before I open up for public comment?
Perhaps I could just show...
You bet, Don.
I'm a kind of a visual person, so I went to District Three and I took the copy of our facility setback requirements and asked them to come up with a map showing what can be done in the county. And on the map, the blue is of course floodplain areas and rivers and creeks. The white are the 1320-foot setbacks. And this is for a Class B operation. And the green is where anybody could put a facility. Now, going to Class A, the map essentially hasn't changed much. And that's from 500, and it says 10,000, but it's supposed to be a thousand head up there. So that's pretty much the same. Surprising one for me is our third category, which is up to 10,000 head. And as you can see, there's no green in the county. Zero.
So that's for a mile and a half setback, and today it's two miles.
you could go up to 3,000 head when you use the footage setback. So that would be possible, animal units, I'm sorry, instead of head. You could go up to 3,000 animal units under Class A.
Before you reach that point.
Before you reach that point.
Which is true today with our current setbacks. Any other comments before I open it up to public?
I have one quick one. I think there's a lot of question too. I think there's a lot of people that feel that they're going to be severely impacted. And they don't even, they don't meet the definition of a KFO. And so that is one thing that we changed. And I think it's pertinent for people to read that. I'm going to read it quickly. But concentrated animal feeding operation is an animal feeding operation, which is vastly the same. I think it's exactly the same, isn't it? So we define animal feeding operation as the same definition. It's the state definition, but we put a number of 200 or greater animal units. And then when you go to KFO, so it's an animal feeding operation, so you're going to have to have at least 500 animal units or utilize liquid manure or an environmentally controlled housing where animals are contained in a thermostatically controlled environment. So those three things are added. And then four and five are the state definition, and that's discharge pollutants into waters of the state through man-made ditch flushing system or other similar man-made device or discharge pollutants directly into waters of the state which originate outside of and pass over, across or through the facility or otherwise come into direct contact with the animals confined in operation. So I think it's important as well to identify yourself as a KFO or not.
All right, one last thing to clarify, and it was comment made at the last meeting about a Supreme Court ruling on right to farm. So that case was decided at the Supreme Court level. But it was a summary judgment. Let me restate that. The summary judgment said it was not appropriate and remanded it to the lower court to hear again. So the Supreme Court did not rule on the right to farm. That case was actually ended up dismissed. It was a stipulated judgment on both parties. Essentially, the one party pulled their CUP application, the other party dropped everything. So no fault was stated. So the entity had reapplied for a CUP permit and now they are back in court. But the important thing is, the Supreme Court did not say the right to farm has no merit. They didn't really entertain the right to farm. They just sent it back to the lower court. So with that, we will open it up for a public comment. Every person who comes up has three minutes to speak. And right now, I only have three folks who have signed up. Mr. Barkle, would you come forward?
You should be able to hear my timer, I think, when it goes up.
All right. Well, I've got a little bit of a summary of my own that I'd like to present. All right, so we have my summary of the proposed Article Five changes. And I guess I'm on the planning commission, so I feel like I know it pretty well. If we want to look at balancing the scales between basically animal operations and rural residences. Today, the current zoning ordinance, rural residences just have to comply with 20 acre lot size. And then they can get a building permit. For animal agriculture, if you wanted basically any size facility, you got to get a conditional use permit, which complies with facility setbacks from water, property lines, right of ways, towns, churches, residences. You need a stormwater permit, state D A N R permit. If you're over a thousand animal units. Nutrient management plan, facility management plan, stormwater management plan, waste transportation restrictions. You have to adhere to the industry best management practices. You have to have a notification plan for your manure applications. You have to have a review of the weather prior to your applications. You have to comply with setbacks for your manure applications. And there's also restrictions on the sale of your operation depending on if you got your CUP too quickly or too soon before you decided to sell your operation. The proposed changes, basically for rural residences, we add an acknowledgement of existing animal operations in your area and acknowledgement of possible nuisances from the operations. And basically, it gives a little bit of zoning preference to current animal operations if they want to expand. But one thing to note with that, it's just an acknowledgement. It's not stopping you from getting a building permit if you wanted to get a building permit for your house. On the animal agriculture side, the main ones that we added are increased facility setbacks and increased scrutiny on smaller operations based on your manure classification, which I'll go over in a little bit here. Just a comparison from different zoning districts in our county. If you're low residential, rural residential, low density rural residential, R1, you have a five acre minimum lot size. R2, one acre minimum lot. R3, half acre. If you wanted to build a house in a commercial district, you'd have to have two acre lot and you'd have to go through the conditional use process. Same thing with the lakeside commercial district. You'd have to have one acre and go through the conditional use process, which is a lot more stringent. There's hearings and public notification goes out for conditional use processes. You can't just go into the zoning office and get a permit. Rural transition, there's 20 acre minimum lot size. And then in our current Article Five, like I said before, it's 20 acre minimum lot size. And under the proposed, we're going to add those acknowledgements for basically existing operations. And those acknowledgements get attached to your building permit only. And you can basically walk in the zoning office and get your building permit. You don't have to go through a conditional use permit. So if you notice, that's less restrictive than commercial or lakeside commercial.
I misspoke. The three minutes went off, but it's... My phone was silenced.
Okay. I'd like to go through this a little bit more. There's some setbacks comparison. If you had solid manure at 250 animal units, the current ordinance, there is no setback. The new proposed ordinance, quarter mile. 750 animal units with dry manure is quarter mile. Under the current ordinance, under the proposal, it would be 1485. You get up to 1,200 animal units in dry lot. Dry manure is 1,320 feet, quarter mile, under the current ordinance. And it's just shy of half mile on the new proposal. 2,500 animal units, we are at half mile under current and just about a mile on new proposal. If you go to liquid manure, 240 animal units, which would be a nursery barn for hogs, current, there is no setback requirement under the new proposal. It's a quarter mile. If you go to liquid finisher barn, 960 animal units, current is 1,320 feet, quarter mile. On your new proposal, it's just about a half mile. If you said 1,400 animal units liquid, which would be like a thousand head dairy, current ordinance is quarter mile. The new proposal is just about three quarters of a mile. If you go to 2,500 animal unit liquid, the current is half mile. The new proposal is well over a mile for the setbacks. I can skip the increased scrutiny because we've gone over that. I think Sheri did a good job going over that. I made my own map, similar to Don's up here. And this one, each red circle demonstrates a 2,534-foot setback, which would be the equivalent of a 2,400-head hog finisher barn or a 280-head dry lot cattle or 960-head deep pit cattle facility. And as you can see, there's very few places in the county that aren't circled in red. And that does not take into account a 330-foot setback from right of ways, 660-foot setback from property lines that, from property you do not own or from any kind of water source as well as lake streams, any of that. So that shows the restriction that basically just shy of half a mile, we've locked out 90% plus of the county. And as a side note, in 2015, there is a study by the USGS estimated that the average Yankton County resident used about 49 gallons of water each day. That's for drinking, cooking, washing, sanitary. All of it eventually ends up down a drain. If you take just sections 15, 16, 21, and 22 and 27, which would be basically, if you're looking at my cursor, would be this area of the lake area, Utica South Township. If you assume that there's two residents per house, which there's about 350 homes in this area, that'd be equivalent of about wastewater from 15 hog finisher barns. No regulations. And the groundwater level is about 20 feet down there. I live down there, have my own well. It's about 20 feet. And that there's no restrictions, there's no oversight over anybody's drain fields. And if you actually map out the area, which I did, being generous, it's less than 400 acres that all that drains on. And that's not including any of the campsites, which there's hundreds of campsites down there. So to me, it doesn't seem fair that we have this unbalanced scale of restrictions on anything animal agriculture and turn a blind eye to everything else. And the current ordinance is already restrictive, and we're going to make it more restrictive with this proposal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I have a question. Could you live with a quarter mile on all number of animal units?
Quarter mile on all animal units? I think the quarter mile on all animal units would probably be acceptable. But as you increase the population out in the county, then that's still going to eventually box you out. And I don't know exactly what the solution for that is. But one thing that people need to keep in mind is when you live out in agricultural district, you got to expect that there's going to be agriculture going on there.
I understand that, but I'm assuming that people aren't moving out there. They're moving to rural residential, not next to the farm.
Well, as you can see from my map, there's plenty out there already. Each circle is a residence. All right.
Good evening. I think I'm going to touch first on the start of construction. And I know, Joe, that you said everybody's been talking about it. But I feel it's a very foolish definition. It's going to make it really hard for contractors. And then anybody else is going to build any kind of structure out in an ag district, try to plan six months ahead of time, like a lot of these guys do for large buildings. It's going to make it miserable and hard to do. Now, Joe, you said that we don't do speeds zones and stuff like that, and we don't enforce all that. But if you're not going to enforce your rules, why pass them?
I'm saying that there's not somebody walking around checking everybody, Jay.
Okay, what you're putting in here is another job for Mr. Vedder to go around at 180 days on every building permit issued in Yankton County. And now he has to go check and make sure that construction has been started.
Jay, the state put that definition in.
I don't care who made the definition. I don't care who made the definition. It applies to Yankton County zoning.
If it's not in there, it's still state law though.
I just told you, if you're not going to enforce it, then you have to enforce state law. Okay? You can't ignore it. So now you just gave another job to Mr. Vedder's office to go and make sure everybody does this, correct?
The governor did.
Well, I don't care who did, but Mr. Vedder now has to go check on these, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I'm doing. Okay, and then when you go to minimum yard requirements, all buildings and structures included but not limited to decks and patios, you went down from 75 feet to 50 feet. In that minimum yard requirements, we should also have trees put in there also. Because as a neighboring landowner, I don't want anybody parking trees too close to the property line. And then all of a sudden, I've got to go trim their trees so they're not overhanging my fence or anything else. So trees should also be added to that minimum yard requirements in Section 515. Now, we're going to get down to Section 519, in the screening and buffering section. And it goes, "The applicant of this naturally vented open-style KFO must plant a shelter belt of trees between the proposed KFO and a shelter belt should run length of the footprint within 250 feet of the facility." Well, that's nice. That on the north side, that on the south side doesn't say. And it's a natural vented facility. Do I want a shelter belt of trees within 250 feet of my naturally vented facility? Foolish. I don't care if it's a dry or, because it could be a cattle feedlot as far as that goes. Last thing is the road haul routes. You don't have road haul routes listed for anything but livestock facilities. 50,000 bushel bin out there in the county has more loads going to it than my finished. the county has more loads going to it than my finisher. Why in the world do I have to have a haul, if I put up a new one, why would I have to have a haul route when a grain bin of 50,000 bushels doesn't have to? It's spot zoning. And a lot of the others issues like the shelter belt and everything are spot zoning, because they're only touching animal agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heiney. Mr. Heiney here?
Hi. I don't have a CAFO. I have nothing to do with any CAFOs. However, I do have a farm, and I do have a big concern about this manure application issues, because I do have a hostile neighbor who has been viewing me every time I'm out in the field. And, you know, there's a lot of things on a farm that stink that are not manure. And one of them is organic fertilizer. It's pretty smelly. He still, you know, watches me all like a hawk. And there's no provisions in there saying composted manure, which is a completely different product than, say, manure itself. And so I have a concern that some of that manure application law could be used against me in the future. There's another concern too. This is echoed. I have a well down there and down in the lake area. It hit water at 15 feet, which the DNR considers a shallow aquifer situation, very special. About 500 feet from there, I have campgrounds that have 12,000 gallons daily of human waste. That's according to the DNR. Those, those were put in without DNR permits, as required by state law. When those things were brought up to the county, to the zoning, you know, we haven't heard anything, you know, nothing really was happening. So it goes back to, again, if you're not gonna enforce these laws, if you're not gonna fairly enforce the laws, not just against the CAFOs, but also against all the other operations that require, required DNR permits and all these other things, you know, why do we have the zoning? I, I guess I get concerned when I look at this. I don't see this law saving the county from any lawsuits or anything. I don't think it's gonna stop any CAFOs, especially, maybe some small ones, but big corporations, they're gonna have money and lawyers to just walk all over us. So it's not gonna stop them. So, you know, unless we start to actually enforce the law as it's written, and I don't think there's any much help to any of this. So, but those are my opinions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Well, you're good. Come on up.
Zane Williams, Irene. This, this grandfathering thing, I know, Joe, you feel that it, I heard part of, part of your explanation there, but grandfathering to me is grandfathered when you build it, it stays with the land. Because, so if a person builds a house next to you, and we have 150 years of livestock development, concrete, buildings, all these things, these people put up a house, our grandfather goes away. Grandfathering is really nothing, just as long as I'm there. And unfortunately, you know, I don't have a child that wants to take it. So I do feel we're getting penalized. I think we've lost our grandfather there terribly. And I, I mean, I know there's other guys too that have this same, same dilemma. And we do have a house that's probably less than a quarter mile. I guess I've never mentioned it. And they're great people. I sold it to them. That person might not like me so well, or the next owner. That part, I think, is gonna be, open up the door for some lawsuits down the road, my thoughts. One thing that was mentioned earlier in some of our earlier planning and zoning, there was, how many years can we go now in this new proposal or the old with livestock? If, you know, if we would, like Bruce Hiring's, I believe, had said that, you know, you could, if he dropped over dead and all of a sudden his kids couldn't get out of the service, how can we, how long could he go without having to reapply for a CUP?
He has a CUP today?
No, no. But, but he would have to, have to apply for a CUP at that time if he's sat empty for two or three years. And we had talked about in planning and zoning, putting that five years. And I, I don't know if it ever got changed.
Right now, the non-conforming use has one year. And that was, that was never changed.
Right, right. We'd talked about it, and it seemed like it had brought some attention. Because my biggest problem is, so you get economic conditions and livestock that, you know, and, or droughts. So we don't raise any corn. I mean, how long will some of these feed yards sit empty? Are we gonna import corn for $8 like we did in 2012? I'm not that, been there, done that. Don't worry. So, I mean, it gets a little sketchy on that. And I know that a lot of these things are being put in for mainly the hog barn, the cattle, the cattle feedlots haven't been the target, but unfortunately, some of these things affect us.
Can I ask you, Zane?
Yeah.
So what's, what's being proposed or changed that changes the grandfathering clause from today till this ordinance?
Well, but I mean, if, because I'll lose it, because Sheri was gonna be the middle person, because Don, you sold your farm. If I sold my livestock.
Today.
You have no protection today.
Right next to you, and you're done.
I realize that. But, but I'm not saying, it's, it's a change, but I'm not exactly sure it's a change for my livestock operation. That's what I've said.
Well, I've got a note, or go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I had a note to talk about the non-conformance, and I skipped over it here. But, so, one thing, Section 1611 is not changing. That's in here today. It reads, "Any use which is permitted as a conditional use in a district, under the terms of this ordinance, shall be deemed a conforming use in such district without further action." A non-conforming use can never be allowed. But anyway, so, shall be deemed a conforming use in such district without further action. So I just wanna make sure it's clear that simply not possessing a CUP does not make you non-conforming. You have to be non-conforming. You could, you could possess a CUP and be non-conforming.
Right.
But just because you don't hold a CUP today doesn't mean you're non-conforming. So that, this doesn't necessarily come into play. Now, if, if your operation is non-conforming, and you don't have a CUP, then yes, you would have one year, according to this. Or the other option is if you think any of these changes are gonna put you into that, you could, I mean, you could, you could get a CUP at any time.
Mm-hmm.
And then when you go to sell your property, that next person has that guarantee. But you also, I mean, you could sell today with that same guarantee to that person. You just can't cease operation if you're non-conforming. But just not, just the fact that you don't have a CUP in your possession doesn't mean you're non-conforming. Because 1611 says, since, since that use is permitted as a conditional use in an ag district, it shall be deemed a conforming use in such the district without further action.
Yeah. It, 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 you know, a lot of us have a little bit simpler, simpler thought process on that. And a lot of those things, no, the county is not going to say you can't sell it to a non-family member. I mean, that's ridiculous to, you know, for anybody to even think that. But it would have benefits, that we would never have to get a CUP, you know? If we sold it to somebody else, probably would end up doing it. And I don't know what those restrictions would be, even on those, on the new CUP, you know?
First, as it sits today, you can, you can continue operation, you can sell it. The only thing that's changing is, is the setback portion. And that's what, what we have introduced, is that the, the setback from a new residence essentially is Nolan Boyd. Today, you're impacted immediately.
Yeah, you know, and I-
Other than that, we're, I mean, nothing's being changed that would change your situation, I guess.
No.
Or make it any worse.
That quarter bu, that quarter mile setback, like Wanda, you know, talked about, we'd talked about, and I proposed that three or four years ago, to get away with a lot of this rigor roll that we're going through, I feel. But I think the half mile is a little bit far. But I know that Caleb Pedersen out there, by, he had come and got a CUP from Yankton County and ended, ended up doing it in Bonham County, because he was scared of the lawsuits. And they were out there loading hogs yesterday, and they just pulled out a Wilson trailer that were built in Yankton, South Dakota with four brand new pots. They still drive our roads. We don't get the tax dollars off that building. And so I think we've lost some, lost some, some of my projects that probably Yankton County should have had. But I don't know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zane.
Louis Johnson-Bolling. I wanna touch on one thing that Zane had brought a question to my mind. He retires, but he stays on the farm. He can rent his crop ground out, and anybody can come and farm it. They can be the next door neighbor, they can be from Ethiopia. It doesn't matter. Can he rent out his cattle yard? He's got a hell of an investment in yards and buildings and setup. Can he get any, or if he rents it to Don one year and to Dan the next year, they both have to go in and apply for CUPs to rent his cattle yard for a year?
No.
Or does he just have to shut down, let it grow up into weeds, and just total, totally get nothing out of his investment in bunks and buildings and concrete?
Nothing preventing that.
Okay, there's nothing preventing, for renting it out? I mean, I rent-
Today, and there's nothing proposed to prevent that. No.
Okay. So I could go rent Zane's, and I wouldn't, I could just run under his? Huh. That's kinda surprising. Don, on your map over here, how many places can I put a 3,000 animal unit operation up?
How many green spots do you see?
None.
That's your answer?
Okay. Now, so in other words, in order to come up with a viable operation, I have to go out and get big backing to where I can buy two, three sections of land, set in the middle, and get rid of everybody else. I guess my challenge to everybody here that's against confinement feeding, against livestock, against big egg, and I mean, you see ads all the time. My God, donate to this Isaac Walton Club, and we'll teach you how to spot pollution and stop big egg. Liquid manure, what is so toxic about that over dry manure? You don't knife dry manure in. So you spread dry manure out, and you catch a three inch rain. Is it still dry manure, or is it liquid manure? The liquid manure is knifed in. You catch a three inch rain, I'm not gonna say nothing will run off, because you put dry fertilizer out there, that runs off. But there is the percentage of pollution of knifed in manure, and the chance for it to run away is way less than spreading it on top of the ground. And all of these hateful things that have been going on in this county since 2017. Oh my God, we're gonna have a hurricane, and all the lagoons will flood, and this toxic waste is gonna go all over the country. I don't know of one of the new CAFOs that went up, where the water even got up to the foot of the building. We're gonna have piles of dead pigs all over the place. My God, it's gonna be terrible. Last batch of pigs, I ran out of the nursery, my son ran out. Less than a quarter of a percent death loss, which is nothing. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the fact that you're taking away opportunities for young people to get started. Unless they win lottery and can have six, eight million dollars to spend on land, they can't get their footholds. They can't get started. The 25% increase is a joke. What other businesses in town or in the county, you know, this is county, so we can, we can limit any business in the county if we can limit egg? How many problems have been caused by the setbacks we now have? And let's be quite honest, that is their goal, zero green spots. Because I wanna live in the country as far as right to farm ordinance, but a right to farm, what's easement on the property? You buy an acreage in the country, that stays with the property, just like if they bury a water line, or a pipeline, or a electric line under it. That goes with the property. You bought that property knowing that there is gonna be farms, and if there's farms, there's gonna be livestock. And I'd like to see everybody just for six months, do not buy one thing, nothing that was raised by a farmer or manufactured by big business. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? Do you have a pig feeding unit?
Yes.
Can you, can you live with a quarter mile setback?
I am less than two-
Irrespective of how many animal units.
Oh, could I live with, like, yeah. I don't have a problem with it. Okay, some days, yes, you smell it. Some days, no, you don't. I have three neighbors around me. The only one that's ever complained was the one that owns an acreage that lives across the road. And he was mad that I didn't put it closer to his place, because he wanted his taxes lowered. But he's got cows and pigs and guinea heads and emus and chickens and everything else, so he doesn't care. The other ones have cattle. And when they spread manure, it smells. When we spread manure, it smells. The only thing is, one thing I've noticed with the dry weather we've had, the study done by the University of Nebraska showing the benefits of animal fertilizer, the soil improves, the microbial activity improves within days of application. My son and I were out working on our center pivot, the 9th of July, and he goes, can you believe this corn? I said, I'm impressed. 9th of July, the pivot had not run, so it had nothing but rainwater on it. The corn was two foot above my head and dark green. And the way my son put it, he said, it looks like the manure is doing its job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Please state your name for Patty.
Lauren Nelson. And I apologize for not signing up, but after listening to all these. First of all, I just wanna say, my husband just got done harvesting wheat. And we thought the crop was gonna be pretty sad. But he was surprised. And why? Because it had manure on it. They had piled manure on earlier before they planted. And my husband says that is what produced a pretty darn good crop, better than what they expected. What I wanna talk about in what has gotten me passionate is the next generation. I know people in this room have, not say boasted, but are proud of the fact that they are a fourth, fifth, sixth generation farmer. I think the Nelsens up north at Yankton were on our third generation, looking at the fourth. And I listened to these men talk, and many of them say, I don't have a child that's interested in farming. They might be the last generation here in Yankton farming. And that concerns me tremendously. And I guess as you, as commissioners, have to say to yourself, are these rules that you are proposing going to spur on that next generation to wanna come back and farm in Yankton County? Because that's what I'm on the verge of looking at. My husband, my, my brother-in-law, they'll go by your rules, because they don't know anything else. They just know how to farm. And so whatever rules you pass, they're gonna work with them, because they have to continue on, because they can't quit and, you know, find something else to do, as most of these gentlemen here. It's my children. It's my children. I have three children. I have a daughter who's graduating from college next year. I have a daughter who will be heading off to college for animal science at Dort, and I have a son who's a sophomore. They have options. They don't have to put up with your rules. If they want to farm, they may look at it and say, you know, do I want to deal with all these rules and regulations? Or can I go find a job that, you know, pays better, whatever, has better benefits, easier, don't have to deal with all this? And that's the thing that you have to decide. It's not, you know, thinking about what's going to happen in the next five years or the next 10 years. It's what, you know, what, what rules do you put in place now are going to affect 20 years down the road? 30 years down the road, you know, are we going to have that fifth, sixth, seventh generation of family farmers here in, in Yankton County? And also too, I see people, you know, shaking their heads about livestock and everything. Where, where, where do you want your food to come from? When I, when, when I know that Louis Johnson's, you know, producing hogs, I know that he is following the rules. I know he's doing the best for his animals, et cetera. It's, it's a good product. If we limit livestock in egg areas, where is it going to be raised? Where is my food going to come from? And the thing about it is, is if we keep limiting, limiting food in, in the United States, South Dakota, all these other countries, you know, states. Where's our food going to come from? Well, my, my thinking is other countries. China, South, South America. Where, where's our food going to come from? And so I'm just saying, I'm just, you, you have to make the decision. Are the rules you're passing, these, these regulations going to spur on the next generation to want to farm? Because I think that's the key. It's, it's about family farmers. It's about families passing that on to the next generation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ronald Booty, I live in Yankton County. I moved off the farm when I was 25. I have listened to these people talk and I've listened to you folks. I understand that you've got tons of books from the federal authorities with rules and regulations. You've got tons of paper from South Dakota State Government that's got rules and regulations. Now, the only question I want you to consider is this, is if these folks can't stay on the farms and you know where, who's going to be farming? Do you want to have Cargill, Tyson, DuPont? You want seven to 10, maybe 20 big corporations to be in charge of your food production? Thank you.
Thank you. Other folks. All right, we will close public comment at this time. Bringing it back to the commission for final discussion and action.
While you refresh us and everybody in the crowd, what can be addressed in final discussion and action?
Okay, so I will read that. It's a good thing I put a marker there. So 11, 230, adoption or rejection by board. After the hearing, the board shall, by resolution or ordinance, as appropriate, either adopt or reject the amendment, supplement, change, modification, or repeal with or without changes. Consideration of any changes to the proposed amendment, supplement, change, modification, or repeal may only be done if the time and place of the hearing is published at least 10 days in advance in a legal newspaper of the county. If adopted, the board shall publish a notice of the fact of adoption once in a legal newspaper of the county and take effect on the 20th day after publication. The provisions of 11, 222 are applicable. And that is the portion where people may petition to put it to a vote.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I have point of clarification on the changes. So when we talked about liquid and solid manure, we, we began with three classes. We began with liquid, solid, and semi-solid. It was taken down to the two classes and in doing so, I think Jim Petrick actually brought this as a comment at the last meeting, but our discussion was that liquid was anything greater than, anything less than 10% solid. I'd have to look at definition.
I think that's right.
And, and then anything else would be solid. And then I think what got transferred over was our original definition of solid and our original definition of liquid. So right now we have anything greater than 10%, anything less than 10% solid is liquid. And solid's a definition is anything greater than 10%. So there's 80% that's undefined of liquid. So I think we need to clarify that in these definitions. I should have been smart enough to have these definitions in front of me here before I started talking.
Did you find it? Do any of the commissioners have a problem with removing the restriction on the increase in size? Because that's what I've been hearing a lot of, that folks are concerned that they won't be able to increase their operations.
Mean? What restrict, how, what are we?
The 25%.
That was one thing I thought I touched on and because I've got the same thing is people say, oh, we're only letting you expand by 25%. That's only that's a free expansion, right? We're allowing them a free
So, so what?
Barred expansion 25%. If you want to expand again, you could expand, you could come in every week and expand. You just have to have a CUP that reflects your size. And we capped it at 999 because the state takes over essentially at 1,000. And so I think it would be difficult for us to say at 1,000 that you can expand by 250 head, 25% without updating anything, because I think the state's going to have a problem with that.
And I think that's where the confusion lies, is that everybody that seems to be concerned is concerned that they can't expand. And I don't think that's the reality.
Right. Well.
And I, and I think it needs to be clarified because that seems to be something that we've spent a lot of time talking about.
The reality, I think, is Wanda, that their concerns are that to expand beyond that 25%, they need to go and get a conditional use permit. To do that, they are subject to the voting of the planning and zoning and the county commissioners, and that changes. And that's what I think they're concerned about.
Well, and that's why I said, does anybody have a problem with removing the restriction?
Well, see, I see it as a benefit though.
It's not a restriction, really. So it's a requirement. So our current ordinance, we have animal feeding operation or CAFO new. An animal feeding operation or CAFO constructed after the effective date of this ordinance or any subsequent amendment of applicable articles or sections. Operations in existence upon adoption or prior to future amendments may be considered a new operation if the facility is expanded to facilitate an increase of more than 300 animal units. So today, existing operations can expand by 300 animal units. Otherwise, they have to come in for a CUP. So even today, they don't have an unlimited expansion. They're limited to 300 animal units. And I think the viewpoint was, why don't we change that to a 25% adjustment instead of just the flat 300? So if I had 50 animal units today, I could go to 350 without needing to do anything. But I, if I went to 400, today I need a CUP. But if I had 50, I'm limited to 25%, aren't I not?
No, because he, well, depends.
That's kind of the way it sounds. So wouldn't it be better to have 300? Well, it depends on where you're starting from. If you're starting at 50, it'd be better to have 300. But I can go up to 200 without anything.
Right.
Under the proposed changes.
At 50, you can go to
200.
To 200 liquid or 500 solid. So you can go all the way to 500 without any concern today or with the proposal. That's where I see.
And right now, you can, at 500, I can go up 300 today?
What's the? Yeah.
Yep.
Up to 990, up as long as you stay under.
If you are in existence upon the adoption of the ordinance or any, any amendments. Because after the amendments in 2006, any new operation should have had a CUP because it starts at one. So these would be operations in existence of 2003.
Mr. Chair, could you clarify where in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, it says that you don't need a CUP if you're under 200 animal units and you're liquid? Because when I read it, you have one animal unit, liquid, you do need a CUP.
Definition of AFO starts at 200 animal units. And then to be a CAFO, you'd have to be an AFO.
So an animal feeding operation is a lot or facility where 200 or greater animal units, excluding aquaculture, are confined, stabled, fed, and maintained. When you go to concentrated animal feeding operation, it's an animal feeding operation that is previously defined and meets one of the following criteria. At least 500 animal units, a liquid manure system, or it utilizes an environmentally controlled housing. And the last two are from the state that discharges pollutants into either man-made ditches or waters of the state. So in order to be a CAFO, you've got to be an AFO. And to be an AFO, you've got to be 200. So anything below 200 has absolutely no restrictions under the proposed changes.
For the increase of 25%, anything under 200, you could increase by.
You don't have setbacks. You don't have.
You can go up to 200.
Manure management, you don't have anything.
So if you've got.
It just exists.
Yep, if you've got 50 horses today, that's 100 animal units.
Or a young farmer with, with 40, 40.
40 cows or. Feeder calves. I shouldn't say cow calf, because if you're cow calf, you're not a, you're not an AFO. So if you want to, if you want to feed 199 today, under these proposed changes, you can start. No setback, no requirements. You go to 200, you have to have a manure management plan and meet setbacks. No CUP on a dry lot.
And then at 500, you come for a CUP. That's where we we defined a CAFO as 500 or greater.
For a dry lot.
And everybody knows, how many cattle everybody's got today, Red?
The only county, the only county in the state I know that knows what every operator had is Beetle County. Because when they did their ordinance changes, they required every operator to register. And if they didn't register, they pulled their CUP. They're the only county I know that did that, went that far. The other counties all go on the honest system.
I can about imagine the pushback if we said that.
Yep, there's no, no way.
I guess my, for my, for my expectation, I want to clarify one thing. I don't expect Gary Vedder to be out and counting cattle every six months.
No.
And I don't expect.
I think Bill should do that.
It's about like anything else in the order. It's like I said, I mean, if someone's, if someone's got a moonshine still out there and you're not bugging any neighbors, nobody's going to know about it and nobody's going to.
Nobody cares.
Now, if you're selling mass quantities of your moonshine in town and word gets out, someone might come snooping around. But I mean, I, it's fairly common sense. As long as you're, you know, not, not causing an issue for the most part, you're probably going to be fine. If your neighbor's got a hot air balloon and a safari lens on his camera, he probably knows exactly what you're doing. But outside of that, you're probably going to be all right.
Did you find the manure description in there?
I had it, but yes.
It's on page four, I think, of the, the definitions.
You gave it to me. I had it in here. So so the, what we have is solid, the vast majority, greater than 90% of excreted manure will be maintained in a form that can be handled with a front-end loader and stacked without seepage under normal operating conditions. Example, floor-raised poultry, deep-bedded housing systems, dry lots. And then liquid is greater than 90% of, of the manure will be liquid that can be pumped without agitating. Hand up with a centrifugal pump. So anything from 11%, actually, it's not even greater than or equal to, it's greater than. So anything from 10 to to 90% is undefined as it reads today. And then I, I wanted, I know in Chris's presentation, he talked about a dairy. In the that was part of the reason that semi-solid existed was because dairies typically are a combination of solid and liquid and that, that's kind of caught them. And I, I believe in our discussions, we, we're going to classify either liquid or you're either liquid or you're not. And so dairies would fit under the solid manure setbacks was my understanding. But I, I think we've got a big hole there that we can clarify.
Do we need to go 50/50?
Well, okay. Not yet.
Not yet.
So what I, what I was thinking, what I would propose is we leave liquid as it states. And then solid, I would just define as any manure style not conforming to the definition of liquid. Something like, and then and then in the setback table, I would have a note that says operations in which both solid and liquid manure exist. So if you've got a dry lot beef and a finishing unit on there, what do you, you know, what are you going to do with the setback?
What if we leave the setbacks just quarter mile for everybody and then we don't have to worry about whether llamas are one animal unit or half an animal unit?
I think that would get put to a vote by the people and turned down so fast it wouldn't even be worth all this trouble we've done. That's my thought. But so then I, I would say put a note in the setback table. It says, operations in which both solid and liquid manure exist shall have a blended setback, taking into account setback distances proportional to the number of animal units of each style of manure. I.e., an operation with 1,000 dry lot beef cattle and an operation with 940 animal units of finishing swine would have a setback of 1,000 animal units times 2.2 feet per animal unit plus 940 animal units times 2.64 feet per animal unit. As an example, does that make sense? Because we've got setbacks down to number of feet per animal unit. And I, I feel that's easier than saying, well, that's about 50/50. So we're going to put this for a setback. Something to contemplate.
One suggestion that I had on the set, received from a guy on the setbacks, was that you maybe could adjust setbacks according to the number of conditions that the producer is willing to do. Shelter belt, water testing.
I, I proposed that, and it got shot down very hard by both sides of the issue.
When?
That planning and zoning.
Oh.
Because I agree. I mean, I, I think there's, I, I've said it before, I agree a half mile for finishing barn is a long ways. But if someone's willing to enclose the barn or do, you know, this, that, or the other thing, there should be ways to reduce that setback. Because then, then essentially, everybody wins. Because anyone complaining about the owners, if those are addressed, then the person who wants to put up the facility now can find a location for it. But like I say, that got, that got voted down.
I'm just trying to make something everybody can live with, yet have some rules.
That was the rea, that was the reason the variance got removed as far as a neighbor. So the, the, the thought was, okay, if I, if I've only got three eighths of a mile, but I, this is where I'd like this facility, and I've got a neighbor here, I can go talk to them and say, what's, what would it take for you to sign this? If I, if I enclose the barn, would you, would you sign this? And then hopefully, they would, and you can reduce that setback. That's how that all transpired.
You know, I guess I think we have a dilemma. If you look at the maps that were put up here, if, if we, if we create 3,000 small farmers, each having five cows and three sows, we can have all kinds of animal operations in Yankton County. And they probably are less respectful of manure management than the bigger, more modern operations that are regulated. The reality of life in agriculture, to me, and, and I spent 40 years financing it, 38 years financing it, is that that doesn't exist anyplace in the United States. That type where you've got 10 cows and 15 sows, it just doesn't work. People can't make a living doing that. So the options, I mean, we're headed really towards pretty much zero animal production in Yankton County unless you get a conditional use permit every time you want to expand. Yeah, that's how it is today, though. Except it isn't 13, it isn't-
Except what?
Except that, yeah, the, the setbacks-
Are much less.
198, 1.98 feet, the 2.2 feet to 2.6 feet or feet, all eliminate numbers where people can make a living in animal agriculture. They eliminate the opportunity to have a place. If you want to have 3,000 little farms out there, first of all, you'd have to fight like hell to find 3,000 operators.
So then what do you propose, Don?
No setbacks or low setbacks or no CUPs or?
No, I think it's, conditional use permit is appropriate, appropriate tool. I think the 1,320 feet is, is an appropriate setback amount.
For everybody.
For agriculture.
For 10,000 head?
No, no. I think when you get to the higher, higher animal unit numbers. But-
We run into the same issue. I mean, with the larger operations, today, we're at a two-mile setback. There's no way you're, we're having a large operation today. At two miles. And a mile and a half is, looks impossible. As Louis said, you can either buy a bunch of sections and put them together, or you can work with neighbors and hopefully, they sign waivers and you can put one in. But-
You might get a waiver signed, I'm seeing it might, for one person to get a thousand animal unit deal. You might get a waiver for that. You're not going to get a waiver for-
10,000.
10,000 animal units.
You might get a, 3, 4,000 head dairy operation somewhere. That'd be about it.
Ben, Chair, we take five minutes.
You bet. I need a motion to take a, go ahead.
I move we take a five-minute break.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Take a five-minute break. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are on break.
All right, I move we go back into session.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to go back into session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. We are now back in regular sessions. So we're at 8:30 right now. We've talked about some changes we'd like to make to what's in front of us. One concerns the liquid versus dry manure, and then we've been talking about setbacks.
I move to accept Joe's definition of liquid versus solid and further move to modify the setbacks to half a mile for everything.
Okay. Don't second. Nobody second. Please don't second. And the reason is, is we need to be careful on parliamentary procedure how we're moving forward because what we've got is an ordinance that we're reviewing. So if you're going to make a motion, I believe it should be move to approve the changes, approve.
I know what you're saying. How about I'll try this with these changes?
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would move to approve the changes as reflected in the commission packet with the addition. Now, do you want me to do one or a compound?
Well, because if it goes forward and we approve it, then we're done. So if you.
Then with Joe Healy's definition of liquid versus solid and quarter mile setbacks for all animal units.
All right, there's a motion on the table to approve what has been presented with the change that Commissioner Healy is proposing around liquid and dry manure, and also to change all of the setbacks to a quarter mile from residents, from residents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion to get it in discussion.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. So discussion on that.
Can I get a copy of the definition? I know he just read it out once and I, am I able to get a photocopy of that?
I just wrote it down.
You got bad Android.
Liquid would stay the same.
So we're changing, are we adding a class or we're just changing what solid is?
Just changing, I think it was an error. It's the only reason I brought it up. When we, when we had discussion of going from three to two manure classes, the discussion was that liquid stays the same, and then if you're not liquid, you're solid. But when it got put into writing, we already had a solid definition. So we just kept it, I think, is what happened.
I don't, I don't like the idea of making a change at the, at the 11th hour. It's a good change.
Change is the way, yeah.
It's a big change to do.
What do we do with the 80% that's undefined? How do we handle that?
Do something with it, but.
That's, I wouldn't have brought it up. I didn't consider it a change. I thought it a clarification.
Sherry's idea of 50/50 would probably fix that.
Well, I think that.
It'd be simpler to understand. And it's a good definition. It's just at this point, it's a lot.
So what if, okay, what if I got 1,000 head dry lot beef and call it 1,000 animal units of a finishing swine? So I am 50/50. Or leave it 1,000 and 940. So I'm, I'm actually solid because I'm greater than 50%. And now I add a finishing mark. And now I'm less than 50% solid. You're always going to be flip-flopping. And then the.
I think that question's addressed to Dan.
And then the other, the other, I guess, concern I have is how to, what do you define a dairy? That's, that's, like I say, I think I was thinking in discussion, it was, we kept liquid, and then if you're not liquid, you're solid. Chew on that, I guess.
What did you, what about just having solid, anything other than liquid?
I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah.
Just like what you said.
That's what I got.
That would make more.
Anything that's not liquid.
That would be simpler.
More simple?
More simpler. Because that's what it is anyway.
Let me, let me make sure I understand my options, our options. So if we vote to approve this, and it goes to referendum, and it gets voted down, then we go back to the original planning and zoning plan.
Yes, our current ordinance will, will be effective.
And so if we vote to change it partially here and there, and somebody still wants to bring it to a referendum and cost the county $17,000, and it gets voted down, we still go back to the original.
True, but they have to have a number of signatures to get to a referendum.
Yeah, I'm assuming that they will. So we've worked for a year in the planning, the zoning, more than a year, four years in planning, zoning county commission, trying to bring compromise to this issue that would make some sense to all the county citizens. And it's obvious that we probably still have some consenting opinions, and I'm sure there always will be. So. Vote it down.
You know, and just to comment on the motion on the table is, part of it is to clarify liquid and dry, and the other part is to essentially make all setbacks a quarter mile. Well, the only reason you have liquid and dry is to, is to segregate the setbacks. So it really makes not a hill of beans difference if we fix the liquid and dry because everything's a quarter mile with your motion.
Then remove the definition.
Well, and, and what I was getting at here is it would, if, if we're looking to, I think, kind of address what, what you're trying to do, but not go to a quarter mile. Because I, I believe Don is right, a quarter mile for everything, that would be a 10,000 animal unit would be a quarter mile. There'll be a lot of people signing a petition to put that to a vote. I have, have no, no question about that. So right now, what's being proposed is a setback for solid of 1.98 and 2.2 for municipalities. When you go to liquid, it's 2.64 and 2.64. We could just make all those the same and make the solid and liquid both 1.98 and 2.2, and then there's no difference between them. It still increases setbacks for what we have today, but it doesn't increase the liquid as much. So for a 1,000 animal unit, dry and liquid would be 3/8 of a mile, whereas today it's a quarter. And a 2,000, they'd both be 0.75, whereas today it's a half. And then we wouldn't have to address dry and liquid because it, again, the definition doesn't mean anything.
Other than the size of the CA, or when you become a CAO, I guess, that shouldn't.
Yeah, that's, you know, if you got liquid, you're going to be a CUP. It's just the setback calculation.
I'll modify my motion to that.
I think maybe would be better if you would rescind your motion.
All right, I'll rescind my, I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your motion. That would be okay. And Don, you're good with that?
I'll agree to my withdrawing my second.
Well, then are you going to put forth a motion?
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
I still, you know, we've taken a lot of comment tonight about what our increased regulations are doing and limiting expansion or preventing the young farmer from getting started or coming home, this, that, the other thing. And, and some of it might have merit. Probably a lot of it has merit that there's, you know, some regulation that people could probably, would rather live without. But I, I still go back to my original statement that all of that regulation is in here today. It already exists. What, we are changing three things with some details to get to that, but I don't, we're changing three things. We're increasing setback, we're stratifying manure, increasing setbacks to liquid, reducing the maximum setback distance, and we're offering protection for expansion against new residences. Those are the three things that we're accomplishing.
I get that. Let's just move the setbacks back a little bit, and then maybe everybody can live with it, and we can move on to the next topic of discussion.
Okay, so those are the things we're changing. And we, to me, everything else is, is noise and somewhat off the table. And I say that because we've spent a lot of time coming to this conclusion. We had joint meetings with planning and zoning. We scolded planning and zoning for offering changes to ours because we said this is chiseled in stone. This is what we're going to, going to bat with. If we, if we take all of that and we want to just throw it away because we're adding all this regulation that's already in here, I just think it was a waste of everybody's time. And I tend to agree with Don. Just go back to what we've got today. An egg has no protections against residences and, and I just, I think it's our responsibility to try to put something forward that's going to succeed. And I know there's people on both sides of this issue threatening to petition these changes, but I think those numbers are pretty few. I think those are the minorities. I think if we stray too far from anything we've come to, those chances of it getting petitioned just increase. And I would rather have something that's successful.
So you're proposing just change, just fix the manure definition, and then let's vote?
I guess that was, I wouldn't have even proposed that if I knew it was going to open a can of worms, but.
So I would certainly enter.
We've, we've had how many meetings where we said, this is it. This is the, this is, we're not.
I would certainly entertain a motion by you with that addition.
So I'd, I'd move that we prove the ordinance in front of us with the, the changes in front of us, with the additional changes that the definition for solid manure, is any manure style not conforming to the definition of liquid? And then we add the note in our setback table that we blend the setbacks proportionally to the number of animal units for each style.
So we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I will second. So we have a motion and a second. And the motion is to approve what's in front of us with the correction of the liquid and solid manure. Further discussion?
Again, I can't support that without looking at the setback issues.
I think it's too big of a change to make at the 11th hour.
I'm sorry?
I just think it's too big of a change to make at the last.
Yeah, that's why I had Sherry read, read from this.
The definition.
What we're supposed to do here tonight. And that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to do the right thing.
Even if it's at the 11th hour? So further discussion on the motion on the table to approve with the correction of the liquid and solid manure.
I don't discredit that that doesn't need more looking into. I just, I think we, we could play this game for the next 10 years and nothing would ever change, is what I think. No.
Well, how about if we leave the 1,320-foot setback for animal units of 1,500 and below and, or above that? Negative mile.
You know, another thing that was discussed that we haven't touched on, and I thought it was a good idea, and I forget who was the speaker. One of the guys wanted, you know, they brought up the point that maybe houses in an ag area should be a conditional use permit. And maybe that would be a compromise we could look at. Instead of all these special permitted uses permits, just move all that to a conditional use permit, and then everybody's treated fairly.
And then everybody does what?
Well, right now we have special permitted uses, which have been an issue. The planning commission recommended against them, against us using them. One of the presentations here pointed out that in some zoning districts, rural residents are conditional uses. And, you know, maybe that would be a compromise. It's certainly one of my sticking points is if we just moved everything from 506 into conditional use permit, then everybody's treated fairly that they're having to go through a conditional use permit.
So at this thing, this time, I think our discussion is digressing a little bit, and I'm ready to vote. So the motion on the table is to approve what is in front of us with the changes stated by Commissioner Healy with clarifying liquid and solid manure. Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
No.
Wanda?
No.
Dan?
No.
So these changes have failed, and our hearing is closed.
I thought we were voting just on the changes he was making.
We were voting on the motion.
Which was approve it with the liquid definition.
That's correct.
What if we do the changes in front of us and 1,320 feet for 1,000 or less and a half mile for 1,001?
I just think we're getting, we're, we're starting over with the discussions. Right? I mean, we're not talking changing it 10, 20%. We're talking major changes here. I don't think we can do that major of a change.
So.
Eighth of a mile. Go to quarter mile and a, anyway, eighth of a mile.
So at this point, and unless we have a proposal that we know we can get three votes for, there's no sense making any other motions. We're just wasting our time.
Don, you want to make a motion?
And as was stated, we have our current zoning.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve it as written with the liquid manure definitions that Joe proposed, and that we have a quarter, a quarter mile setback, 1,320 feet for animal units 1,000 and below and 1,000 and above. We've got 1.1 mile.
One mile?
I'll second it.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the proposal in the packet with the change of the manure definitions for, from Commissioner Healy, and to have a quarter mile setback for anything below 1,000 and a mile setback for anything over 1,000. Discussion if needed.
I made an error. I'm sorry. Can I reword, can I reword my motion?
Yes.
I'd like to change it from a mile setback for over 1,000 to a half mile.
That was half mile? Okay. And you're good with that, Wanda?
Yes.
We'll just change that motion to a half mile.
I'm pretty sure that was my motion before.
So I'll second it.
And that's all manure classes. That's everything. That's everything. So quarter mile under 1,000 animal units and a half mile for anything greater than 1,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so are we, are we talking, are we still letting the people out, 200 and below? They can do anything they want?
That wouldn't change.
Spread it anyplace they want?
Yep, that wouldn't change.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and call for a roll call vote on that.
Don?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Joe?
No.
Sherry?
No. So that motion has failed.
So that would be a 10, a mile, or no, half mile for a 10,000 head beef.
Yep, that's what that was.
I don't see that flying in the column.
So unless there are, again, I'll state it again, unless there is a motion who you feel three people will vote for, there is no sense making any more motions.
What, what would you vote for, Joe, on the second, on the second move above 1,000?
Well, I, I'm not Joe, but I'm gonna, can I, can I have a floor for a moment? I, I really do appreciate the work that has gone into it, and there, there are a lot of good things in here, there, there really are. That I can support, but I can't support these special permitted uses. And especially the way that they are. If, if we could move those. To conditional use permit. I could support it.
What is the issue with special permitted use?
Because I, I feel that takes. The citizens out of, of the zoning process. That's just my personal opinion. Like was brought up here, there are conditional use permits for houses in commercial and lakeside.
Are there anything in the special permitted use that isn't permitted today?
K vote expansion of 25%.
No, it's actually permitted for 300 head.
Pardon me?
Today, it's permitted at 300 animal units. So that's not.
It's a permitted use for a K vote for 300 animal units?
Yeah, they can expand by 300 animal units. An existing K vote can expand by 300 animal units today without, they don't even have to come in and get a permit.
Unless they move to a different class.
No. 300 animal units, as long as they stay under a thousand. They don't even have to come in for, they don't have to tell anybody.
So again. We are at a point where we need to decide either we let this die or we continue to try to revive it.
I guess I would, I would be open to having one. One more discussion on this at a later meeting. I feel like we're grasping at straws on the setbacks, right? We're just throwing numbers out. And. And no one's looked at consequences, good or bad, or what the maps look like.
I think the maps are here.
If we. If we wanted to move forward and have one last discussion to iron out these details. We need to limit it to setbacks and setbacks only. But I would say, unless anybody else has anything.
Joe, I, I, as Sherry read that, I, I don't think that's an option, that we can do that. We have to either vote it up or down.
Vote it down.
Yep.
Right, but the, it's still an option. We just have to go back through the.
We have to go through the process.
Damn thing again.
No, let's not do that.
So.
So what can you not live with about the setbacks that Don proposed?
I don't think. There's gonna be any chance of success of permitting a 10,000 head feedlot a half a mile for less residents.
Joe, look at the map. It isn't gonna happen.
Your proposal, Don, was a half a mile setback for anything over a thousand animal units. A half a mile.
Double, double the white circles.
Don, at a half a mile, I can put up seven barns.
Joe, all, all I'm saying is look at the circles.
That's a mile and a half, Don.
No, 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 no.
No, I, I think what Joe's, Joe's point is, is that our current ordinance is a two mile setback. And that would propose to move that to a half a mile setback. And. The vast majority of the folks in the county would vote against that.
And that may be, may well be true.
Yeah, and I, am I saying that right?
Yes.
So I think that's his concern. So pursuing, my opinion, pursuing that portion is not going anywhere tonight.
Well, is a three quarter of a mile setback livable?
Again, and, and I will side with Dan on this one. That's my opinion, too much of a change for. The six months we've been working on this and the 10 or so meetings we've had since January. So if the changes in front of us can't get three votes tonight, then I hate to say it. We need to start over, or a future commission needs to start over. So in my opinion, we're done tonight.
I would probably agree. I, what.
I agree.
I guess what frustrates me is we've been talking about this forever. And we've heard about all these issues that are non-issues. That don't even exist, and some of them actually exist, but I would just call them minor issues. And, and we've heard very little, very little. One person has an issue, has given comment on issue with the setbacks. And now at the 11th hour, we want to completely change them.
There's gotta be a better way to count than point five of this and three quarters of that. As far as animal units, because really, do you want somebody out there counting?
That's.
No, but when you get a permit, okay, if I'm gonna put up a barn, I have pen space. For a specific number of animals. I'll get permitted for that. If I have a feedlot, I've got pen space for a specific number of animals. I might not operate at 5,000. I might have pen space for 5,000, but it might not, I might only have 4,000 critters. But you damn well know I'm getting a permit for five.
Every other county uses animal units across the state if they've got zoning. So again, I, I think tonight.
I don't want to waste, have wasted six months of my life on this. And that not have anything happen.
Well, I, to be frank, I think we have. So we've had great discussion. There's a lot of really good things in the proposal tonight that protected both sides.
I think we should vote again.
And. And. Unless I have a motion, I'm closing the discussion and we're moving on.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as proposed with Mr. Healy's. Change. Because I believe it has protection for farmers. And I think they need some protection because this current ordinance is a mess. It's, and the one that we're voting in is not perfect, but it's better than what we have.
So your, your motion is with no changes?
Except for, she's including the definitions for manure that Commissioner Healy.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to approve the proposal tonight. With the changes mentioned by Commissioner Healy on manure styles. Discussion.
I guess I, I would. Agree with Wanda stating this isn't perfect. I do feel it, it offers more protections. For the livestock, the industry in Yankton County than what we currently have today. And I, I'll go back to, I don't think we can make any. Very drastic, drastic changes from our current ordinance. Without one side or the other getting extremely upset. I think both sides have, on this proposal, have to concede some, and I think both sides gain some.
Roll call vote.
Wanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don?
No.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Motion passes three to two. We are done. So with that said, we are on item 11. Plats.
We have four, four plats tonight. First one is plat of lot 13, Whitetail Run in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section. Excuse me, 16 Township 93 North, range 56 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve lot 13 of Whitetail Run. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0.
Next one is plat of Surata's addition in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section 31. Township 95 North, range 57 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, to approve Surata's addition plat. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0.
Number three, plat of tract 1 of McDonald's addition in government lots 1 and 2 in the northeast quarter of section 2. Township 95 North, range 55 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve tract 1 of McDonald's addition. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0.
Last one is plat of Matheson tract 6 in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Section 6 Township 93 North, range 56 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to approve the Matheson tract 6. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Item 12 is administrative rezone of some rural transitional district zones.
So recently, we've been talking about doing one, one administrative approval to try and. Get some economic growth going for, and rezoning all the, all the RT zones that are at least, except for the ones east of, east on Highway 50. Where the flood area is kind of taken over, but, but, so we have about 133 parcels total. You had the draft letter in the packet and, and so. We just need to decide whether we want to move forward on that and send those letters out or not.
Any comments? I know we all had a chance to look at this.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Second. I thought he did make a motion.
I guess.
Then let's just approve it.
The concern I have with, with it would be. What, what's I gonna, if we got a bunch of parcel, parcels. In RT, and this guy wants to be commercial, and this guy wants to be R1, and this guy wants to be ag. How do we handle that?
Well, that's what we're gonna have to, we'll have to see who's interested first. It's gonna, it, it'll kind of go in phases, so.
So this isn't.
So we'll get what, we're gonna ask what they would like to see it as.
Okay.
Then we'll see how the map will look.
We're not gonna grant it.
No, we won't grant it automatically. It would have to go through the regular approval process regardless, once we get it all put in place.
We're essentially just waiving the fee.
Exactly.
Do we need a motion to actually waive the fee?
I think when we get to that point.
Okay.
Right. Informational.
Okay.
So what I, I would suggest, because right now it says Yankton County has decided to allow for a one-time administrative rezone. I would say is discussing or, or doing research or something along the lines of that.
Okay.
And we're interested in. Or wondering if you'd be interested in rezoning if so.
Okay.
You know, so it's.
Don't make it.
It's guaranteed.
It'll be automatic. Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
To consider?
Yeah. And then I would say I, I'm in favor of sending those out to see.
Sounds good.
So I think you have full support on that, Gary?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13, let's start with claims.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
The motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve the claims as presented. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next would be together, the auditor treasure report and pooled cash reports. So I did pull the reports from June of 2020. And if you add up the general fund, the road and bridge, the jail, the county building, the M and PR funds. For those, in June of 2020, we had 7.2 million. And today we have 11.7 million. So that's a difference of about $4.5 million. Now, if you'll notice, we now have a line item for ARP, and that's the American Rescue Plan. That adds another $2.2 million. So that puts us at $13.9 million. So as, again, when we went through budget and we had that huge cash reserves allocation into 2022. This is our gut check to make sure that we're doing okay with that decision. So entertain a motion to approve those reports.
Before you get that, we really have over 6,000 in bad checks. Is that just a running total, or that, that wasn't for that month, was it? 6,119?
I would presume it's a running.
Okay.
And is the state's attorney's office trying to collect those bad checks?
We, we do bad checks, but not.
The counties? Does the county do anything to collect that?
I guess I'm, I'll have to check with the county.
Yeah, I've never noticed that number that high before.
Well, no. I think we should chase him around. We have a new person in the state's attorney's office.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure he's, she calls him and I.
Okay.
Said she calls wrong.
So I need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the auditor treasure report and pooled cash reports. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. So item number 14 should be approval of the July 6, 2021, meeting minutes.
We have, yeah, we have to do that next time.
Oh, we have to do it next time? Okay, because it was not. Okay, so let's delay that one to August 3. Okay, well, let's go on.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah, I didn't either. It was only one letter difference, or so, two letters, I guess, two. So item 15 is a temporary case review position reporting to the state's attorney's office.
Yes, so we've done some research and Commissioner Healy. Did as well. What we're looking at is following what. Many Haha County does in review of their poor relief applications and. Especially the ones that we need to do, because they've accumulated. And so. The idea is that if it works with the group that does it for Many Haha County. That would, we would go ahead and, and get them to do ours as well. But it's, it's basically a temporary position, and they would review those petitions for us. Make a recommendation that we can then take back. Regarding whether or not the petition is, if the application is appropriate.
So long and short of it is, you're reviewing them for, to meet the state statute.
Correct.
But we don't have anyone to review the.
Medical necessity.
Necessity, and so we're looking for a medical opinion on that.
Yep.
I'd move to approve that because. We're getting killed with poor relief. We as a Yankton County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Kettering, to approve the request for a temporary case review position in the state's attorney's office. Discussion. And I do believe this would qualify for the ARP funds as well. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Public comments? Anyone like to make a public comment at this time? Anyone like to make a public comment at this time? Public comment is closed, and we are at Commissioner Updates.
No updates.
My.
For me.
I don't think I have any either.
None.
None.
All right. Entertain a motion to go into executive session for poor relief pursuant to SDCL one twenty-five two, twenty-eight thirteen, and twenty-eight thirteen one point three, and also for litigation pursuant to one twenty-five two, subpart three.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. We are now sitting as executive session.
I would move to go back into regular session.
Second.
A motion by Fox, second by Healy, to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I would make a motion to prepay the costs of witness travel for an upcoming trial in the amount of five hundred and fifty-one dollars and four cents, which is six, thirteen hundred and twelve miles at a rate of forty-two cents per mile.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to prepay travel expenses for a trial at the cost of five hundred and fifty-one dollars and four cents. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pen the files of CW twenty-one dash zero four six, twenty-one dash zero four nine, twenty-one dash zero five zero, and twenty-one dash zero five six through CW twenty-one dash zero six four, based on the following South Dakota codified laws. Twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three, subparagraph one, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three, subparagraph two, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three, subparagraph four, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-four point two, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three dash two, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash three, and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy and second by Fox to pen the cases stated. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And also.
Um. Probably the answer is, okay, we have a lot of calculations. Yeah. I'm sure. Yes. 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 Yes.
I would like to withdraw my prior motion and amend it. The math calculator during executive session was incorrect. It should be twelve hundred and twelve miles at forty-two cents for a dollar amount of five hundred and nine dollars and four cents, not five fifty-one oh four.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Kettering.
To correct.
To correct the previous motion's dollar amount to five oh nine oh four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. So, Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the files of CW twenty-one dash zero five zero through twenty-one dash zero five five, based on South Dakota codified laws, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three, subparagraphs one, two, and four, and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three, and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three point two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to deny the claims stated. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Items for next meeting, we have Mike for the intersection.
Joe, the first one was command and the.
Pen.
Pen.
It's right, what Sherry just handed.
Advertise for veteran service officer.
I'm sorry, do what?
Advertise for veteran service officer.
No, we're going to do, we're going to do that.
Officer.
Officer.
Okay. Approval of the July sixth.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes.
All right, with that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd move to adjourn.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.